And we actually met with them for about forty-five minutes before the meeting and they had all kinds of questions for us and I hope they enjoyed it as much as we did, so. Please stand for the pledge, everybody. Go ahead, line up.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, guys. I remember I was a Weeblo. I don't think I was as good as these guys. But thanks for coming, everybody. Roll call vote, please.
Well, just roll call.
Yeah, I always do that.
Sandy Kufold, here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Okay, everyone's here and accounted for, that's good. Bills payable, entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-one cents.
Support.
We have motion and support. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufold.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. If anyone has any public comments for anything, come on up, state your name and address. And we did get our mic fixed, so everyone in TV land should hear you.
I was so happy to see the Weeblos.
Yes.
It was a long time ago, but I'm still here. Anyways, I just want to make a couple of comments. Pathian, fifteen-hundred South Channel, Harsons Island, also the Harsons Island-St. Clair Flats Association. I understand the safer grant has gone the way of the wind. I just want to let you know that whatever we can do to help facilitate any future actions, I talked to Chief Rose, we're there, you know, whatever we can do to help with that. The other thing I see on the agenda, and I've talked to somebody about it, is the public access grant application. You're working with the DNR for the Crispin Drain. Kudos. Again, whatever we can do to help you with that, we're at your back in call. Anyways, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Pat, we will have public hearings, part of the grant process for that property, so.
That is no.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Any Weeblos? They are, they all had lots of questions beforehand, so they put us to the test, that's for sure. All right, seeing none, moving right along, consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of September eighteenth and synopsis, check reports, the September water report, October parks and rec updates. I do want to make mention, the last day to register for our upcoming November election is October tenth, if you're not currently registered here in Clay Township. And there is communication in here regarding our holiday office hours, of which the week of Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's, we will only be open on Tuesday, December twenty-sixth. That will be for the last day for tax collection for two thousand and seventeen, for anybody wanting to pay before the New Year.
That's it.
Support.
Okay, we have support. Any discussion?
Thanks for saying all that.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you, I was gonna pull it out.
I knew it was coming out.
Yeah. We knew it ahead of time.
I have a question on check number two-nine-two-two-five, the pond guy. I just need an explanation on that.
That would be for the special assessments that they do for the treatment for the canals.
Basically, money in, money out.
Yep, that's what I thought. And I see a couple of Anthony Bain and Donald Franklin.
Yep, those are refunds from the building department.
Bonds, yeah.
Bond refunds?
Thank you.
Yep. Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Had some, a lot of meetings and talks with the planners and the planning commission the past couple of weeks, and we had a really nice sit-down meeting with, actually it was the planners. Joanne was there for a little bit. We had our code enforcer and we kind of explained to them that we have some issues. There is some issues with the zoning maps, how they're presented on a certain, a few different properties, and as you remember, the board, you requested me to write a letter to have them look at that and, you know, they're gonna have to make some determinations there, which we did talk about. And also, we have issues with motorhomes, campers. Some people are trying to make them permanent dwellings, possible issues with tiny houses and portageons. We have issues with washing out seawalls, neighbors' seawalls washing out, and we're gonna, they're gonna take a look at that and maybe make some determinations and issues to guide our, the planning commission has to develop policies and procedures on that to guide our building department. And also, we're, they're gonna look at chickens and we have a, yeah, right now it's, you can't have chickens unless you have two acres, well, a lot of people have, you know, small, a little bit of chickens, and it's becoming more popular. We're looking at putting some guidelines on it and hopefully allow, be a little more lenient as far as how much property you need and to have a smaller amount of chickens. So we had a letter from fourth grade, I believe she was, last year, Avery, and in fact, I'm gonna shoot an email to her and tell her we're gonna get that ball rolling here. Another thing we have, right now, we have a county ordinance that if you extend a road, it's gotta be curbs and gutters, and I don't know how everyone in this board feels. I've talked to a couple of developers where they own one side of the road and not both sides, and basically, they're saying, you know what, Artie, we'll put one, maybe two houses here, but we're not gonna pay for curbs and gutters to extend this road because it almost doubles the cost of the road. And put fourteen houses on when none of the other roads in the area have curbs and gutters, number one, and number two, you know, he's gonna be footing the whole side, whole bill and the people, individual property owners on the other side will also benefit, but they won't have to pay for any of it. So we're gonna be looking at that. It is a local ordinance, but it's a county road policy, too. You know, it depends on the width of the lots, if they're fifty-footers, if they're a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five-foot lots and that, so we're gonna look at how that works. And we're also had a few people thinking that we shouldn't have permits for people who are tree trimmers working in our township, because we're having a lot of issues. They're, they're cutting all these trees down and they're dumping large amounts of woods or huge piles of wood chips. They're paying people to illegally take them and it's an issue, too. So that's just a few of the issues that were, I asked the planning commission to take a look at. So I just want to let the board know, and they are going to aggressively be working on those situations, and actually, a couple others. Let's see, yeah, we, we had our auditors here all last week and they're gonna be, be here the following week, so we've been busy in the office doing that. And I myself personally have been spending a lot of time on the Columbine property for the kayak access site, which we'll be talking about later. North Channel Sturgeon Fishing Classic was last week. It was a great event. It had twenty-eight boats, caught eighty-seven fish, and I think it was the third one, and it's getting bigger and better every year. And I think that's just a great event. And also, this past weekend, it was the Harsons Island Sportsman Swap Meet over at Brown's Field, and it was the first time they did this. I stopped in there, I enjoyed it. I'm guessing they had, what, thirty vendors, you think?
Well, that.
Yeah, and they had people from duck carvers to artists with, you know, portraits of, of sportsman-type prints, and there was, Cabellas was there, there was a couple manufacturers of duck calls, and a lot of people just selling decoys and lures and fishing stuff, and they also had a duck calling contest. I think there was about thirty people was in that, and I'm not sure who won the two-man.
I don't.
But the one man was Cody Gordon, our, one of our firemen, actually won that contest, so that, kudos to Cody. Second year in a row, actually, he won that. But they're, they're planning on making this an annual and they want it to be bigger and better next year, hopefully become a two- or three-day event similar to what they do at Point Mule, which is, you know, it's a big, big thing there. And they got a lot of good ideas going for it, I just want to mention it to the board. Wanted to thank Firehouse Subs and the FOP Lodge, the Robert Christie Lodge, one-eighty-five, helped us get a grant for LED, which will be placed in patrol unit, I think, what's that? AED. Yes, right, LED is. I wrote LED, I was just talking about the LED lights, that's why.
Why don't you explain what AED is, maybe to the scouts if they don't know what?
It's a defibrillator. You could attach it to a patient, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, and you guys know more, but it'll, it'll measure your heart rhythm and it'll automatically give electricity to jump-start someone's heart again. They're very good at bringing back people that are having a heart attack and they save a lot of lives. And we, do we have them in all our patrol cars?
Not all of this town.
Not all, but a lot, a lot of it, we're working, well, we have another one.
We have one in the office.
We have one here in the office, they have one next door. But yeah, they gave us a grant, it was only one of four in the state, so we're happy to, to get that. And I wanted to mention also, the, we're starting a project that we approved a little while ago, is to put a second seat in our dispatch center. That project's gonna get geared up and going here in the next week or two. And also, the HD camera, high-def cameras that we approved for the fire department, they are all in now, right? Or the police department, they're all in now, and probably in the next week or so, we're gonna start working on the office. That's all done, so.
You're going on vacation, Mike, to do that?
No. Yeah, we've been, they've been busy, so lots of good stuff. Just want to mention some upcoming events. We have our yoga class that just started, I believe it was last Tuesday. It's every Tuesday for six weeks, six-thirty to seven-thirty at Millside Elementary. It's forty-five bucks per person for the whole class, or you can drop in for ten dollars. How was that? You went there, didn't you? Was it good?
It's very good.
You were a little sore the next day.
I was a little sore.
So then the Zuma Fitness Class also started last week, that's on Wednesday at Millside, six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? I'm sorry. And it's also forty-two dollars per person, ten-dollar drop-in fee. And did you go to that one, too?
Yes, I did.
How was that?
It was very sweaty.
Okay. I didn't go.
You should've come, Artie.
I should, I'll sit in the back row, that's for sure. I wanted to mention to everyone, Harsons Island Third Annual Halloween Party at Stewart Farms in their barn, it's on Stewart Road in Harsons Island, October twenty-first, Saturday. It's free for one for five, five and up is ten dollars, includes a lunch, hayride, bounce house, scavenger hunt, face painting, candy, scramble, cotton candy, and guess what weight the pumpkin is? I know we'll have a police car and a fire truck there and craft table and pumpkin decorating, all kinds of stuff. That's a pretty good event. I believe last year, they had about four hundred kids there, and that one's getting bigger and better every year. So I wanted to put that out there to remind everybody. And then also, our scarecrow festival, Saturday, October twenty-eighth, and that's, this is our second year doing it, and this is gonna become a big event also. And I know Cindy Babish, she's looking for a few sponsors, but we have all kinds of good stuff going for that. We have a scarecrow contest, hoping the Weeblos do a scarecrow for it, and we have all kinds of activities gonna be going on for that. We have an interactive DJ who is great with the kids, he gets all the kids involved. Let's see, what else we have? We got, we're gonna have make-your-own scarecrows so people can come, and we have all the supplies and everything to actually make a scarecrow and you take it home with you. We're gonna have games, we're gonna have a pet dress-up contest, a dog dress-up contest, right? And there's prizes for that. And there's a bunch of more other stuff going on. We're having the, Macomb County, they have a mobile arts and scraps van where they come and they set up all kinds of arts and craft stuff and just a bunch of scraps they pick up in the, all over the Macomb County and the city, and they have all kinds of fun projects for the kids to, going on with that. If you have any questions, you can always call our office and, and get the answers, or if you're on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like that page. All that stuff is posted with flyers and everything, and more. There's other stuff that's going on besides that, so anyhow, that's it with my report. So any questions? Give me a call. Other than that, we don't have any unfinished business. New business. This, the Weeblos should be interested in this. First thing, we have to set our Halloween party, or hours, party, too, I knew it was on my mind. Our Halloween hours.
I apologize, the agenda says Monday, October thirty-first. It should read Tuesday, October thirty-first.
So what do you guys think? When should, when should we start trick-or-treating? When should we end it? Yeah? Six to ten? Ah, it's a little late usually. It's a school night. They have a half-day at school? Oh, my God.
What about the next day?
Yeah.
Got quite a few suggestions, but.
Who else?
Um, five to eight.
That sounds perfect.
That sounds perfect. What's your name?
Noah Arpan.
What was it?
Noah.
Noah?
Noah. Noah Arpan.
Noah Arpan.
I think that is a brilliant.
Yes.
You want, who wants to make a motion?
I will make the motion that we.
From Noah, Noah's suggestion.
From Noah's suggestion that we set Halloween hours for Tuesday, October thirty-first, from five to eight PM.
I'll support that.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a note, a motion and support for Noah's suggestion of Halloween hours.
Thank you.
Tuesday, October thirty-first, from five PM to eight PM. If anybody has a problem with that, you can hold a Noah Arpan. His phone number is Noah. We have a motion and support, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Pearl Beach Lions. They didn't send me an email, but I know them well enough, and I told them a verbal's good enough, and I think we have a few people here for that. They're requesting use of the park for a tree lighting ceremony, December second, two thousand and seventeen. Gentlemen, thank you for everything you do in our community.
Good evening. Thank you trustees for allowing us to address the board tonight. My name is Tom Fetter, I'm past president of the Pearl Beach Lions. This is Tim Treppa, he is the secretary of the Pearl Beach Lions Club. One of the reasons we're here tonight, if I may, we're gonna, we're gonna go a little long, just like the supervisors' report.
Oh.
We are, Tim's already sitting down. We are requesting permission to use the park, December second, at five PM, to light the Christmas tree. We're gonna have Christmas in the park. We're gonna provide hot dogs and hot chocolate like we do every year, and Santa Claus is...
Coming to town.
I believe he's scheduled to show up and give sleigh rides around the park like he does every year, I hope he comes. That's always a big hit with the children. So I'm asking permission for that. You can wait until I'm done, just like the supervisors' report, before you make a motion and approve it, I hope. I'd also like to, if I may, talk about Halloween night. The Pearl Beach Lions Club has a party every Halloween, we do have a bonfire, we do serve hot dogs and cider. I just had to coordinate with the chief because I haven't asked him previously, I was kind of put in the cart before the horse, because we usually have the fire department come and light the bonfire, so we don't do an uncontrolled burn of the fragmities between the fire department and our club. So October thirty-first, we usually light the fire around dusk, and like I said, we provide, we provide hot dogs and cider for the kids, and it's always a great time.
When is that?
Halloween night.
Halloween night, okay.
Yeah, we do it on Halloween night.
That does.
We're there late, you know, a lot of kids show up after they go trick-or-treating, so I'd love to see some of the, some of the Weeblos there Halloween night, that would be great. Let's see. Speaking of Christmas in the park, on November eighteenth and nineteenth, the Pearl Beach Lions Club will be decorating the park, and we're requesting help from anybody in the public who would like to come out and give us a hand. That would, it would be great. Any organizations that would like to come and give us a hand. Gentlemen, that'd be, that'd be great if you guys showed up and came out and helped us put up some, some Christmas lights in, in the, in the park. It's, it's always a beautiful display that we have here in our beautiful park, and so we've got that scheduled for the, for the weekend of November eighteenth and nineteenth.
What time?
Uh, we're, I don't know, I don't want to get there too early.
Get with me and we'll announce it.
Probably around nine AM, I'd imagine.
We'll announce our next couple of weeks.
Sure it'll be a beautiful brisk day.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna be doing that. And also, for Christmas in the park, we also, we also asked the Elginac Choir to come out, and they always, they always oblige and come and sing Christmas carols, so that's, that's, that's a really good fun time. At this point, I'm gonna turn this over to my, or to our secretary, Tim Treppa, and he's, he's, he's gonna talk to you about some of the really cool stuff that's going on this week at Millside and Elgonquin Elementary.
Oh, yeah. I promise I'll be shorter than Tom. Two years ago, with the help of a lot of other community organizations, Pearl Beach Lions Club put on a vision program for their Elgonquin students, I believe it was fourth through sixth grade. Four hundred and fifty kids got eye exams and sixty-four kids got free pairs of eyeglasses courtesy of us and the other organizations. This year, we've taken it upon ourselves to try to finance the whole thing. We are now in the middle of Millside, well, we're not at Millside yet, we're at Elgonquin doing the second graders, and then tomorrow, I think we're gonna start the fun kids, the kindergartens through the first. We've started a good dent this year, we've got two hundred and fifty kids scheduled to go through eye exams, and we've already given ten vouchers away for kids to get free eyeglasses. So I guess I'm asking, on the third week of February, when it's very cold out and we've got a very warm tent with entertainment and stuff, think about that for a second and help support the community through us. Thank you.
Hey, hey, you do that with that new, that trailer that you have?
We're doing it with the trailer and it's a camera.
Right.
And it takes about a minute.
I'd extend an invitation to any, you know, we've been doing a lot of events with kids in, in the park, like the scarecrow thing. If you guys want to bring that trailer and, and set it up to...
We did it at Winterfest last year.
At Winterfest, I know that.
Yeah.
But, but any of our events we have where there's gonna be a lot of kids, feel, you know, feel more than welcome. I, I don't know what's involved in getting it and manpower.
There's a lot of logistics, I was up in...
Right, I'm sure there is.
I was up in Metamora picking, looking at it and picking it up and for grass it and...
Right.
Talking about it and sea boing, and I still don't know where sea boing is, but I was there.
Right. Well, I, I'd extend that invitation to you guys.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and one day, we'll get together and we can do it, because it takes a little bit of timing.
Right.
But we can do that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you in advance.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Good job.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Do we have, no, we don't have a motion now, do we?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to the Pearl Beach Lions Club to grant the use of the park for a tree lighting ceremony on December second, two thousand and seventeen.
Support.
From five to ten. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have on agenda, property purchase, and it's been no secret, I've, or we've been looking at buying some property for a proposed kayak launch, and we're also gonna market it as a bike trailhead. It's nine acres, and it's on M-one-fifty-four Columbine Road. It's kind of like past Stewart and before the Schoolhouse Grill on, on the side, is three, three acre lots on the side of where the Schoolhouse Grill is, and it borders the Crispin Drain, the Blue Ways. I've been talking to the owners, we've been negotiating, and we have a proposed purchase offer that if this board so chooses, authorizes me to sign. I'm in hopes and I'm pretty confident of getting a MDR, MDNR trust fund grant that will pay for seventy-five percent of the purchase price. And that being said, I even took it a little further, talked to St. Clair County Parks and Rec, their whole board did a walkthrough, and they verbally told me that they would actually pay for half of our match. So the cost of the township to buy these nine acres would be twelve and a half percent of the total cost of the, of the property. Essentially, we're gonna be getting about fourteen acres for a little over, I mean, nine acres for a little over fourteen thousand dollars. And there is, there is some, and I'll, I'll be upfront, to qualify for the MDR trust fund grant, you know, it's gonna be a park forever. We can never sell this property or develop it. It's gotta be a park open up for the public, so if the board's not willing to make that commitment, then, you know, we would have to not buy it through the trust fund grant. They, and there, there is gonna be a few more costs associated, we're gonna have to get a full-blown DNR appraisal done, and part of that will be environmental study, wetlands determination, and there are gonna be some costs on that, I'm getting quotes for it right now. And I'm also in talks with, I have a meeting with the county Parks and Rec, Mark Brochew, in a couple of days, about them maybe splitting that cost with us, too. I didn't get a commitment yet, he's the one that brought it up to me, hey, maybe we'll take, you know, cover half of that, so I'm, I'm hopeful on that. Let's see. And Mark Bro, I'm, I'm, like I say, I'm pretty confident of getting the grant, Mark Brochew is excellent of writing these grants. They fund about eighty percent of the, of the applications, and Mark Brochew's done several of them, I don't think he's, he's ever even been turned down for one. And he did a walkthrough and, and at the time, he goes, this is a no-brainer, Artie. And furthermore, when the environmental... And furthermore, when the environmental people were here looking at the Crispin Blueways Trail, the Crispin Drain project, they did me a favor and did a walkthrough on this property, and they cited like 8 or 9...to me, I look at, I see a field, I see weeds. I'm not gonna lie. They cited about nine different endangered species, as far as vegetation, and categorized them, took pictures of them. They're gonna give us two or three letters of support to, you know, to go forward with it. I assume I'll be asking the support from the Harson's Island Homeowners Association. Friends of St. Clair River has told me they're going to support it. I probably have about six or seven other agencies that already told me, you know, "We're gonna support this and give you letters for it." So, I'd be very, very disappointed if we didn't get that grant, let's put it that way. And Mark Brochue's gonna help me write the grant, and like I say, he's got tons of experience going for it. I already asked a couple of organizations to give us quotes for doing the concept drawings on it and everything that we'll need to go forward with it. But like I say, we went out...I went out for the township, got an appraisal done on it, and the offer is under the appraised value, so I don't anticipate any problems there. And the whole glitch of this thing, because of the DNR trust fund, it takes so long, we won't be able to close on it between 18 and 20 months. But I put in a PO, he gave us 24 months for closing. So, I had some further conversations with our attorney, and he got an email somewhere. She approved all the language in the PO, except we should probably have this in there that's in quotes. And the reason being is the PO, it's a standard PO, they give you 10 days for inspections, and I...her and I were talking about it. I said, "You know, we're gonna have to have these studies done, and it's not gonna happen in 10 days. We're gonna need permission to go on the property. It could be six months from now to actually do the environmental studies and the wetland delineation and that sort of thing." So, this is, you know, I...this language has to be in the purchase offer.
Supervisor Bryson, you don't mind my asking?
No.
When you say it has to be forever a park, does the DNR put restrictions on specifically what they need to be in there as a park?
No. No, it has to be...
We just can't turn back into residential property?
Right. It has to be open to the public. There has been a few pieces of property I know of where they say they put up a splash pad, and they charge to get into that splash pad specifically, but the whole park in general has to be free. And, yeah, you can't...like, the township couldn't sell it for profit, couldn't sell it, and it couldn't be...you can develop somewhat if we need to, wanna put a pull barn up there or...
Storage or something.
Storage or that type of thing, but, yeah, you can't really develop the whole thing. It's gotta stay pretty close to a park.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just know there are specific guidelines. You have to have this in place and this in place, and it always has to be that way. And I guess personally, the reason why I ask is, you know, we've had many conversations in this board and previous boards about how the township does not have any waterfront property over here. Crispin Drain is supposed to be an upcoming local Blue Way Trail.
It is Blue Way Trail.
I would hate to see the missed opportunity for us to have some property on that Blue Way Trail and potentially utilize the park, especially being as Harson's Island is building up. I think eventually, it's gonna be nice to have that little area over there. But this two years, through this two years, we get surveys, we can go through public hearings...
We're gonna have to have, for the grant, we're gonna have to have a public hearing. The grant will require it. We're gonna have to amend our Parks and Rec plan because it has to be in our Parks and Rec plan, so I'm gonna request a plan commission to do that. We already spoke about that a little bit with the planners. That's part of the process also. Trying to think what else. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of work involved with this, a lot of paperwork. We have to have it submitted by April, and I'm not...I'm gonna start this next week, if I get the go-ahead, to do this. And my concept, or my thought, and this is just my vision, I mean, everyone's welcome for input and so is the public. You know, we have nine acres. We're gonna have a big green space, you know, wooded green area between the residences on each side. And I would like to see a good parking lot for bikers and kayakers, and then we'd go have a walkway going out, and then once we get into the wetlands, it's gonna have to be elevated. And so, it'll be elevated walkway out to where the Blue Way, the water trail is, have a little T-dock out there. I'm gonna request two handicap kayak launches from the county, which, you know, they give out for free, as long as we maintain them with that program. I'm very knowledgeable about that program. And then also, my vision is, you know, we have nine acres, that's a lot of property. I've reached out to the local DNR about them doing some type of a nature walk there or something like that, and they are very interested in that partnership with them on that. And I'd like to put eventually, an observation tower, not real high, you know, a 15, 20-foot observation tower, because you get up there, you can see across that marsh for quite a ways. I think that would be an added attraction. That's my own vision. You know, I can...you know, that's just my vision, but that's something that, you know, along those lines.
I think that the sky's the limit with what we can probably do, which will be of a great benefit to the area, to the island, to the whole township. And I would say that we should stay, excuse me, very open-minded and pursue every channel that we need to, to make this be a win-win for us.
Right.
So, I'm on board with that.
And like I say, the initial purchase, it's...I believe with the grants available, it's a good deal. I'd like to make the motion that the board authorized me to go ahead and sign the purchase offer, and as long as it includes the language that's submitted to us in the email from our attorney.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
Okay, you're not gonna stick it out with...
Let me read it?
Yeah, read it.
Purchaser may contact any all inspections, evaluation, survey, title examinations, environmental studies, including soil borings, determinations of need, easement, and access rights, and/or other due diligence of any kind of its choice, as it is sole discretion, may determine necessary up to the date of closing. In other words, we can go on there and figure out what we need and do all our studies. This agreement is subject to purchaser being satisfied of all the results of the same in the sole discretion. If the purchaser is not satisfied with any item, it may terminate this agreement any time prior to the closing by providing written notice of termination to the seller.
The only thing I can see that isn't in that paragraph is that any disruption of the soil or borings or whatever, that it be returned to its natural state prior to the purchase.
They might want that in.
I'm sure they will.
Okay.
At least some kind of a restriction to make them feel comfortable about it.
Right.
So, the MDNR grant, the trust fund grant...
Mm-hmm.
So, if we give you authorization to sign the purchase agreement, that commits us one step forward. When does MDNR trust fund grant jump on board, and when can we expect...
I'll be probably bringing a resolution to you within a month or so to go ahead and apply for it. We have to have the application in by April.
Yep.
And then they probably...they do a determination in July. They'll come back to us if they have any other questions about the application, and they usually do a determination, I believe it's in September, don't quote me on that, I don't know who actually gets it and who doesn't. But like I say, then, at that point, they're gonna say, you know, "We gotta do...we have to do appraisal on the property, and it will be about this thick," the appraisal, and we turn it over to their appraiser, and they review it and appraise it, so it takes a little bit of time. Normally, they close the closing day. I talked to the MDQ or DNR coordinator, grant coordinator. From now, normally, they close in 16, 18 months. The longest period was 20 months. I asked for 24, just to see why.
Is the seller okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. Well, what I had to do is pay a little bit more money, or we had to.
Well, I was gonna suggest that the other way, is maybe a non-refundable EMD of some sort, but if he's comfortable with it, we'll leave it at that.
Yep, no, he is. He is. Yep, he is.
So, just to restate what you've stated, if the MDNR backs out of their portion of it, and we are not...we don't get the trust fund granted, then we reserve the right to also back out of the purchase agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
All right, I know this isn't part of the rules of order, but in doing this, I would suggest that you have a committee of principals to, you know, help come up with a plan and...
Oh, we will be.
So, yeah.
Yep, there'll be public hearings, and we'll be seeking lots of inputs. The plan commission's gonna get involved.
I mean, prior to the public hearing, we gotta...
Right. We'll have concept drawings done, and, you know, people can come in, check it out, draw on it.
I mean, before the concept drawing, we'll have a concept drawing for the...
Yeah.
So, I think what you're saying, Ted, is you would probably think that the Harson's Island-St. Clair Flats Association or the Homeowners Association would want to be involved in helping us develop that concept for the park over there.
I mean, if we're ahead of it and we got our things together, I think it'd go a lot smoother.
Right.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, that's fine. I've been looking to do, and it'd be part of this, too, start a Friends of the Crispin Blueways Trail, to help this and kinda develop the...make it a little better paddling experience, primarily put help with where the portages are over the roads, a little something to make it easier to get in and out, so...
Personally, I would welcome any feedback from the associations regarding thoughts of what you would want to see developed over there, so...if you guys wanna kick that around at some of your meetings, then let us know.
I'll share you an email with the survey and then the satellite picture.
Provided, of course, if Ford decides to go through with it tonight.
So, I do have a motion. I don't have any support yet, then we can talk about it more if we need to.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Does anybody have any other questions?
Have we had this property surveyed?
Uh, yeah, I think I showed you a survey in our closed session. There's three 3-acre lots.
Okay.
If you remember that.
Yeah, those were our surveys?
Yep.
You paid for those?
Actually, the seller paid for it about two years ago. We didn't pay for that. But I also did the county overlay.
Walkthroughs and all kinds of things.
Yeah, you walked through it, didn't you, John?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. So, majority of it is dry, it's not wetlands. It'll be...
There's a section in there that you have to cross, yeah.
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 Any more discussion? Carry none. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Breshard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufu?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll be...busy day tomorrow.
Busy man.
Okay, next we have a resolution. 2017 commitment to the Northeastern and Anchor Bay Watershed Advisory Group and Stormwater Permit Fee. This is probably my most unfavorite topic, but I like saying swippy permit, but...
I think they picked up on this being Artie's unfavorable, because now they're pulling me into it with this resolution.
Yes.
I don't appreciate.
Yeah. I've had discussions with the top guy from the DEQ or DNR on this four, five years...three, four years ago, but we're responsible of doing stormwater permit every year, even though I don't agree with it, that we have to, and...but this started about three years ago. The county also has to get stormwater permits, and it's done through their health department, and they do a lot of work that we would have to do in other communities, so what they do, they hire a company to go out and do a lot of this preliminary work, and if we pay for a little bit of it, we can use it for our own permit process, and that's what this is for. And I'll just say, I know the law by heart, and it says, "You must fill out or do the stormwater permit yearly if you are government age..." or, no, not government agent, "If you are a complex, complex, that is similar to a large hospital, not a small hospital, large hospital, prison, or military base, where people sleep, you do not have to do the permit if you are individual buildings in a rural area." And the reason we have to do that is because we have seven catch basins in our parking lots between here and the fire hall and the water station. Individual buildings. And I fought that for two years, and they actually came down here and they said, "I'm sorry, Mr. Bryson, but this is a complex." And I disagreed. The same laws in the state are at the federal level, and not one...under those laws, not one post office, and there's a really big post office, has to do the stormwater permit. For some reason, Selfridge Air Base does not have to do the stormwater permit, and our water that we're permitting dumps right into the ditch where the county also gets that water permitted. So, we have lots...our water is very well permitted, but now I'm getting off my horse. We could've fought in court, it would've cost the township lots of money, so...anyhow, I'm not gonna make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2017-31, Commitment to the Northeast and Anchor Bay Watershed Advisory Group and Stormwater Permit in the amount of $1,067.21.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
No.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufu?
Yes.
Mark Breshard?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
You won't.
No, it's something we have to do. I just don't like it. All right, next we have item 5 is the...excuse me, I put a thing on you, and I disregarded all my notes. I had discussions with Jim Fernandez at the 9/11 ceremony at the first responders monument, and we were talking, "Boy, it'd be nice to have some benches there." And, you know, Jim Fernandez of the VFW spearheaded this, and basically, we are gonna have four benches, one paid for by Elginac, one... benches, one paid for by Elginak, one Clay Township, one Wapo Island, and one Ira Township. And this is requesting $600 to, for the Clay Township benches, kinda have, they're the exact same, there's four benches along the war monument, in each corner, exact same benches, they're out of granite, they're real nice, ours, one side's gonna say Clay/Harson's Island, and the other side's gonna say donated by the Clay Township Police, Fire, and Rescue. Elginak's, you know, Elginak will have one that'll say Elginak, donated by Elginak Fire Rescue, Wapo Island's getting one, because we recognize the first responders on Wapo Island at the monument, and that one's gonna basically say, in loving memory of Ronald Billberry, and Ira Township is gonna have one, and it's gonna be donated, it's gonna basically say donated by the Ira Township Fire and Rescue.
I'll make a motion to purchase a first responder, responders' bench to be placed at the Elginak monument for the cost of $600.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. It will probably be in place in two weeks, so just wanna let everybody know, when it does, I'll take a picture of it and send it out. That's a nice monument, if you get a chance to check it out. Okay, next we have item six, Fire Department Prevention Material for School, Fire Prevention Materials for Schools, this is a yearly thing. How many kids do we, are we doing, stand-up based charge?
We are going over to Millside Elementary, we have K through second grade over there.
Okay.
And then the material will be used throughout the year.
Right.
We have outings like in the park, we'll use it for that, tours through the fire station throughout the years, or throughout the year, and then if we do any other events, like on Brown's Field, that sort of thing.
So you're doing for what, eight hundred kids?
Well, that's eight hundred pieces is what it is.
Okay.
And it consists of hats, activity books, crayons, pencils, and it helps the children with home fire safety prevention, check your smoke detectors, stop, drop, and roll, that sort of thing.
Definitely.
Is this an annual event?
Yes, we do it every year.
Okay.
It's Fire Prevention Week, right?
Yes.
Any more questions for Chief?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve for the Fire Department Prevention Materials for the Schools in the amount of $3,095.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we have a Fire Department request for portable pump replacement of $1,368. How much use do we get on our old one?
Quite a bit when we have, like, the Frag Mighty Fires.
Yeah, no, I mean, how old was it?
Oh, it was thirty-nine years.
Yeah, thirty-nine years old, so it did its job.
I've used that years ago.
You'd use that, Joanne.
I don't anticipate the new one's gonna last another thirty-nine years, but.
They don't make them like they used to.
No.
This pump is a, sometimes it can be a little bit difficult, you can get it running, you go to set it down in the water, it'll stall out. With the newer ones, it'll help us provide fire suppression and get water a lot faster.
Are we still gonna use the old one or try to sell it, or?
We can try, but I know the last time, the one that we wanna replace, when they went to start it, they put it in the water, it stalled, they brought it out, and they pulled it, and they pulled the cord out, so I gotta see if I can get that fixed, so.
Maybe worth more in scrap than.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Fire Department's request for a new portable pump to replace the thirty-nine-year-old pump currently in existence at $1,368.44.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next we have a reimbursement of Megan Rickard for her Fire Fighters One and Two class. She already took the class, right?
Yes, she did, she passed, she was one of the highest in the class.
Congratulations, Megan.
She also received other certificates.
Megan, how you doing?
Why don't you drag her up here, too?
Come on up.
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up, Megan, say hi.
Feel the pain.
She's also, she passed her EMT class in the spring, and she went right into Firefighter One, Firefighter Two, she did that, and now she's in a paramedic class at McCombs, the academy there, so.
Terrific.
Do you wanna tell them what you received out of your class at your Fire One, Fire Two?
I got a lot out of the class, more than the Blue Water, certification-wise, so I received Fire One and Two, Hazmat Ops, Safety Officer, Vehicle Extraction, Klan Lab Awareness, and there's a couple more, I think I sent them to you.
Incident Safety Officer.
Yeah, so.
Auto Stabilization.
Yep.
And was it auto?
Vehicle Extraction.
Very good.
I'll make a, make a motion to reimburse Megan Rickard $550 for Firefighter One and Two.
I'll support that.
All right, does anyone have any questions, or Chief, or Megan on this?
The highly motivated, ambitious young ladies.
That's right, very good.
A lot of respect for.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank, congratulations, Megan.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Okay, nine, Fire Department Permission to Spec Out Vehicle. So Chief's basically coming to tell us he's gonna start shopping for a vehicle to replace the 1997 Ford Excursion, isn't that right, Chief?
Yes, sir. This vehicle has 139 miles on it, it's been involved in a couple accidents.
Thirty-nine thousand?
Hundred thirty-nine thousand miles, and then I believe it's had one motor, possibly two, or just one?
I think one.
One.
It's been rear-ended.
Yes.
Rusted out.
The vehicle is rusted out too, and if you try and put one of our trailers on it, it's unsafe to drive with a trailer on it, so for the firefighter's safety and the resident's safety that are on the road, I would like to try and replace that vehicle.
Will you be looking at Ford motor vehicles or General Motors vehicles or?
I would like to get a Ford, but I would also look at GM too, to.
If you ever provide the best guarantee of the deal.
Can we do that through the state grant?
Working on it.
All right.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Pat?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as a retired Ford exec, anything I could do to help the Chief, maybe I can underwrite and get you a little bit of this.
Well, there we go.
Great, that'll help.
Appreciate that.
There you go.
Are you looking at three fifty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Same as what we have in utility too on the island.
Right, yep.
Now I'll make a motion to grant permission for the Chief, Clay Township Fire Department, to spec out a new vehicle, utility vehicle pickup truck.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support, any more discussion?
Chief, is this potentially to replace Dango One?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what it's gonna replace, and you're, you're looking at, you can inform the board at the life expectancy of all our other vehicles and aren't you getting?
Yes.
Trying to reprioritize what going forward?
I am, John, that does our maintenance on our vehicles, he is going to provide me with each vehicle and their life, you know, there's some that need to be replaced here shortly, I know we have an engine or two engines that were ninety-two, purchased in ninety-two, or they're ninety-two, they were made, so, and I know that the Fire Department put some money into those, and those were only supposed to be a quick fix, but we need to be looking at replacing those, we have an engine, or a mini pumper on the island that needs to get replaced, that one's ninety-seven, so we need to start looking at replacing those.
And so the board knows also, we've had discussions about being aggressive with the grant process for this equipment replacement, and you can, we may even entertain the thought of getting some outside help writing these grants, so.
Chief, out of curiosity, I know you've only been here since February, but is there a schedule at the station that lists how much we put into each of these trucks?
I do have.
You know, where we can look back and see each truck and how much.
Right, I can get those maintenance records from the person that services our vehicles.
But there isn't a standing schedule down there that you can look at and say, yeah, last year we put $5,000 into this truck, and the year before we put ten into it?
Not yet.
That'd be kinda helpful, I would think, going forward, to know what type of repair money we're putting into versus investing in.
Yeah.
Good point.
A lot. Okay, we're getting off tangent a little bit, we do have motion and support for permission to spec out a new utility vehicle for Chief, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, or, no, anyone opposed? Non-motion pass, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, Board Member Comments, do we have any Board Member comments? How you doing down there, Mark?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank our emergency response people here with that tragic event that we had in Las Vegas, my brother lives out there, of course, he wasn't in the arena, thank God, but I guess they did a, or I know they did a great job on recovery and taking down the perpetrator, as well as the Fire Department, Police Department, and everybody else was involved, so I'm glad we're in safe hands with our emergency response personnel sitting in front of us right now, thank you.
Joanne?
Well, I'm glad to see how our Fire Department is moving forward and taking care of some much-needed equipment, and that is old, has to be replaced, and that all this, this property purchase is very good, going forward, I think we're making great strides, which will be a benefit to all of our community. Glad to see it.
Cindy?
I just wanna take a minute to remind everybody once again that the last day to register for the November seventh election is October tenth, so if you recently moved here to Clay Township, you would need to register, and you can do that here right at the Township with your driver's license, register to vote here for the upcoming election on November seventh, which is only for the schools, and that is an eighteen-mile renewal.
Sandy?
Saturday, this Saturday, Elginak Youth Football is going to host our annual Pink Out Cancer Awareness Game, we will bring approximately 5,000 people to visit our community in support of raising money and awareness for those battling, survived, or are they in memory of loved ones with cancer. About 1,000 football and cheer players will be on the football field at noon, doing a cheer for a cure during a survivor walk. Cancer quilt will be there, face painting, we have a jail and bail concessions, games, and more, but I also wanted to point out, we're going to have an organization called The Bottomless Toy Chest, and they will be collecting and accepting new and packaged toys and stuffed animals that will later be donated to children in hospitals as they undergo cancer treatments, and the hottest item they look for is fidget spinners.
Really?
Yes. So if anyone wants to donate and can't make it out there and put something in our bins, if you get ahold of me, I would gladly make sure that it makes it.
It's an awesome event. Face painting, I'm in.
There you go, yep.
A lot of people have done that one.
And the money from our jail and bail is actually going for a local family in St. Clair, the family with the father and son battling cancer, all money raised at that event is going to be directed towards that family.
That's awesome.
So we'd love to see everybody. Yep. Games start at nine and they go till about four, we got four football fields running of games all day long.
I will say, if you've never been to those fields at noon, to see that cheer for a cure at noon, it's something that's very, very moving.
Yes, it is, and the quilt?
The quilt?
Yeah.
The whole day, yeah.
The quilt is just phenomenal.
AYFL does a great job with that.
Yep. Kudos. Christopher, how's our Muskrats doing?
Pretty well.
There you are.
Pretty well, we're back rolling again, we're back rolling again, listen, I'd like to thank the Weebles Pack for coming in tonight, thanks for their leadership, those young men were, represented themselves very well. It is Homecoming Week, the high school kids be a little crazy this week, so let's try and exercise a little caution, a little care, cut them a little slack, there is a parade on Friday, annual parade uptown in Elginak, they'll probably shut the community down for twenty minutes or whatever.
It's what, five?
Yeah, five o'clock. We have the football game, believe it or not, there's gonna be a football game, and it's, Armaida's coming to town, seven o'clock Friday night, and the dance on Saturday for the kids, so go Muskrats.
Thank you. Following Friday, we're at Richmond.
Yeah.
At Richmond.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the game.
That could be, two undefeated BWAC guys going at it, that could be a very, a very interesting game.
Yep, awesome, go Rats. Kristy?
I did have the opportunity to see a little bit of the Powderpuff game, and our seniors were winning when I left, our boys were making pyramids in their, they were running onto the field.
Explain.
Girls were playing football, like flag or whatever.
Yep, flag football.
Full of flag football, and the boys were in their full cheer uniforms on the side, so that, I have lots of video of that, so I hope our girls pulled off the win.
Yes. I also would like to thank the Weebles for coming, I think they're gonna do some volunteer work at our Scarecrow Festival, we're talking about that, and come up with a couple scarecrows, so it was, it was a lot of fun talking to them and.
Does anybody know how to spell that, just?
What? Weeblows?
W, it's.
Twoes? Is it twoes? Yeah, I got an email.
About trip two twenty-two?
Trip two twenty-two.
Thank trip two twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they did an awesome job, and they had some excellent questions, every, every one of them, how many were there, twelve, fifteen, I'm guessing, twelve? Every one of them had to come with a question, some were kinda tough questions, so I, you know, we, it was fun.
They wanna get some things done in the Township.
They do? They are specific, how do I get a crosswalk here?
Lighting projects.
How do I get a street light here?
I hope they're still as interested after they graduate.
Yeah, so, no, it was, it was great. Just wanted to warn everybody, now, well, it's gonna get warmer for a few days, but with this cooler weather, be careful, because deers will be crossing the road at night, and they get on the, on the move when it gets a little cooler.
Don't veer for deer.
Don't veer for deer, it's true, and also, you know, schools open, and watch out for those flashing lights, and go State!
Oh.
Go Michigan State, I know I'm in the minority, but I'm a Spartan, my blood's green and white. And here's a lot of questions, so. All right.
One more thing left.
Yeah, one more thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Let's get out of here, thanks for coming, everybody, good meeting.
Send that down to Sandy Kufa, where, slide it down there.
What's that?